Hundreds of homeless women use the center every day. Now several more will be able to stay there overnight. During the day, caseworkers will try to find them permanent homes.
The enhanced Bridge Housing Project will mean so much to the women of Skid Row. Not only will they have a safe and warm place to sleep at night, they will also have access to clean clothes, an evening meal, and a hot shower.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell heads up the Homeless and Poverty Committee.
Go to bed with services and wake up with services that will keep them healthier and put them on a pathway to permanent supportive housing. And so, we need to multiply this by the thousands across the city.
The program shows that progress can be made, but Mayor Garcetti says it will take time.
And don't despair that we can't solve this problem. In between that is projects like this. Where one set of beds at a time, one neighborhood shelter at a time, one permanent supportive housing building at a time, will solve this crisis.
The additional beds are just the first phase of the Enhanced Bridge Housing Program. The need is so great that there is talk of renovating the downtown women's center to allow for even more space to provide shelter to more homeless women.
Along with financial support from Wells Fargo Bank, the program and others like it are also getting funding from the state to fight homelessness. The venue most of us know as the L.A. Coliseum gets a new official name and $315 million of arena improvements in time for the kickoff of football season. Gil Reyes has more from the Gridiron.
Are you ready for Trojans and Rams football? Then also get set for a more pleasing fan experience at the newly refurbished United Airlines Field at Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. For starters, nearly 78,000 new seats, each one with a cup holder for your beer, water, or soda. There's also Wi-Fi throughout the arena.
And maybe the best of all is that not a penny of public money was used to renovate this publicly owned stadium.
They include restoring the 50-year-old mural located at the entrance by the late artist Hans Rosin, handrails on the aisles with anti-slip coating on aisle stairs, a new seven-story scholarship club tower with enhanced suites, lodge boxes, and club seats. The rooftop 1923 Club also has breathtaking views of downtown Los Angeles.
This newly refurbished arena actually came close to being called simply United Airlines Memorial Coliseum after United Airlines pledged to pay millions of dollars towards its renovation, but veterans groups protested.
Veterans reminded people that the stadium was originally built to honor World War I service members from Los Angeles. So, a compromise was reached, hence the new official name, United Airlines Field at Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum.
They were able to not only honor our veterans by ensuring that this renovation brought this war memorial back to its former glory, but also by preserving the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum's historically significant name.
Councilman Curran Price represents the area.
Especially proud because it included 30% local hire provision, meaning that a lot of the workers who worked on this project lived within five miles of this project. That's significant.
Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti looks forward to the 2028 Olympic Games in L.A.
We'll put a track back here. Part of the opening ceremonies will be here even with that other beautiful stadium being built across town in Inglewood. We will see that this city is indeed a city of angels.
The new Coliseum opens on August 24th when the L.A. Rams take on the Denver Broncos. USC also meets Fresno State on August 31st at the Trojans home opener. As you know, new clothes, new supplies, all mean one thing: schools back in session. But for many families experiencing homelessness, they may not always be able to afford the things their kids need. That's why the city and its partners stepped in to help. Rasha Goel has more.
It's a special first day of school for many of the kids here as they head back to the classroom. These kids and their families are currently living in Bagabond Inn in Silmar, and thanks to a collaboration between Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, the L.A. Unified School District, and homeless service providers, these kids will be going back to school with a new backpack, school supplies, and breakfast.
Valley Care Services, yeah, they're very, very helpful.
Well, it's helpful, that's a big thing. Some people don't have enough money to buy backpacks because it's really expensive.
You know, we take for granted the first day of school being just this normal kind of wake-up. You know, you have your breakfast with your family and you go off to school. For families living in motels, it's not a normalcy that they become accustomed to. And I wanted to remind these families that we haven't forgotten about them, especially these kids. I want to make sure that they know that they are, you know, there are efforts to provide them resources and support their greatest academic success, and more importantly, that these families get the support that they need.
Officials tell me this is considered transitional housing for those that are actually living here. And currently, there are 80 families that live in this particular motel. I spoke to some of the families here today who tell me that receiving backpacks has been extremely helpful.
Oh, this is amazing because every 28 days, we have to leave the motel as a homeless person unable to stay here, and then we have to pay for another location as well as storage fees. And so, I didn't have enough money to purchase supplies. So, this is so appreciated. We didn't even expect this this morning.
In June of 2019, Councilwoman Rodriguez launched a homeless family hub, supported through state funds dedicated to homelessness challenges. North Valley Caring Services, a nonprofit that serves homeless and low-income individuals and families, operates the hub and is pivotal in helping provide care for homeless families in the northeast San Fernando Valley.
We don't rely on the families being able to come to us, so one of the things we have is an outreach in which every week we come out to the motel families and we offer them a hot meal. We really take that pressure off of them. Most of these motels do not have refrigeration or microwave, so that hot meal really does go a long way, and they've gotten to the point where they really depend on it. We'll work with families who need clothing, who need special needs for the children. On a day like today, the backpacks are really important.
What makes this collaboration different from others is the direct involvement of the L.A. Unified School District.
But what we were able to do was to create a unique partnership with the Los Angeles Unified School District to help facilitate more direct referrals for many of these families from the school site to these wraparound services.
She's coming with a smile. She has a book bag. She was going to take her things in a plastic bag this morning. So, I think, you know, every kid loves a brand-new backpack to go to school with.
Just another example of how a small act of kindness goes a long way.
And even more low-income students headed to school with brand-new backpacks, thanks to the generosity of a local sports franchise and a local nonprofit.
Please welcome the brand-new Clippers forward Kawhi Leonard.
We're here today to celebrate the extraordinary generosity of Kawhi Leonard and the L.A. Clippers toward children in Los Angeles, especially during this critical back-to-school time.
A backpack alone is a prized possession for any child, but for the children in our program who are homeless or in foster care, it means the world to them. It's not just every student at 107th Street and in Moreno Valley who will be getting a new backpack. Today, Kawhi and the Clippers are announcing they are also giving brand-new backpacks to every student in both L.A. USD and the Inglewood Unified School District.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard, for being here, for believing in our scholars of 107th Street School, as well as the entire L.A. USD. Having you provide all of the scholars with backpacks lets us know that you believe in us and that we matter.
The goal of mine of this year is being great on and off the court, and I felt like this was a great way to start. I know how hard it is for parents and students at the start of the year, so hopefully these backpacks are meaningful to the people that need them.
LADWP shines the light on power outages. A new online map makes it easier to find fun stuff to do, and City Attorney Mike Fuer cracks down on people selling illegal pharmaceuticals. All this in City B. No more sitting in the dark when it comes to information on power outages. The LADWP now provides a 24/7 alert service to customers about major power outages for up to three neighborhoods. Get your notifications by text, emails, or both. City Controller Ron Galpern has released a new online map called Summer Fun in L.A. that highlights over 800 city-funded places to go and things to do in Los Angeles during the summer season. Find free or low-cost events at lacontroller.org/summerfun. L.A. City Attorney Mike Fuer has announced the filing of criminal charges against eight individuals for allegedly importing and selling 100,000 illegal and counterfeit pharmaceuticals. For a list of free and low-cost health clinics, visit lacityattorney.org/healthclinics. The Port of Los Angeles is awarding $1 million in grants to 30 local organizations under the port's community investment sponsorship program. The program, which is non-taxpayer funded, gives out these grants to support education, community projects that focus on local workforce development, the environment, and on promoting the L.A. waterfront. The grants were put in the categories of small, medium, and large, with recipients of large grants including EXP for its Preparing the Next Generation Workforce Program, the Los Angeles Maritime Institute for its Top Sail Youth Program, and the Boys and Girls Club of the Los Angeles Harbor for its Port Ocean and Land Awareness Program. They're the costumes that help tell the story, and you'll probably recognize some of them from your favorite TV shows. They were all on display at the Fashion Institute of Design as the museum celebrates the Emmy Award-nominated fashion.
We're here at the 13th Annual Art of Television Costume Design Exhibition at the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising, FIDM, in downtown Los Angeles. Right here, we have over 100 costumes from 23 featured shows, 10 of which are Emmy-nominated for Best Costume Design.
The museum, as it is now, was founded when we built this building for the college, and it's an adjunct to the college. And with Los Angeles being the home to Hollywood, where television and film really began and flourishes, we feel it's a very, very important part of our culture.
I'm thrilled to be included in the exhibit here at FIDM. It's a real occasion for costume design, and it's really wonderful to see some of my favorite shows here right next to my clothes.
The costumes just seem to get better and better as the years go on.
We, as costume designers, spend our days thinking about the pieces that are going to help tell the story. The pieces of clothing, or jewelry, or hats and shoes, and all those little things that we all put on every morning that we don't necessarily think about, but it's my job to think about them to help tell the story in a way that makes sense for the character. And ideally, if I'm doing it right, you'll never notice.
FIDM Museum is the gift to the community. We never charge admission. We do three major exhibitions a year. This is one of our very favorite ones.
What we love about here is that we have a variety of genres: period, fantasy, sci-fi, costumes that really show the characters of who these people are in your favorite TV shows. So, when you visit here, you get to see that. It's almost like you get to be part of your favorite TV shows.
We made a real effort to have the clothes be a way into the story.
We want to educate generations about costume, and ready-to-wear couture, film costume, TV costume, all types of costume because it's so important to our heritage.
It's a chance to leave the kids at home and come play with the zoo animals yourself. Roaring Nights at the L.A. Zoo is one big party animal bash, and Amarcos gets in on the fun.
This 8,000-pound elephant is ready to play ball to the delight of the audience. Roaring Nights at the L.A. Zoo have kicked off. It's kind of like a party for grownups who never outgrew their love of animals: the huge or the sleek and predatory.
It was really cool. It was really cute. It was playing with the box for a little bit, so that was really interesting to see.
He was smaller than I expected, but...
Not very savage either, right?
No, no.
No, he kind of sounded like, or he looked like a lazy house cat a bit.
Or how about something a bit hairier? Gorillas, anyone?
I can run pretty fast, but you know, I'm cognizant of the possibility. It could jump. It could make it. I think, I watch Animal Planet a lot. I think it could make it.
You'd think it could jump over that moose.
Well, you know, it might grab a limb or something. They swing.
Visitors get a front-row seat to feeding time for some of the animals. This little guy is willing to put on an entire show of tricks for a few mouthfuls of fish. And good hygiene is also important. This seal barters a toothbrush session for a chance at the tasty snacks. While this rescued sea lion may be blind, but he knows what it takes to get in on the feeding action. And apparently, some will even submit to entire medical exams, as long as you keep those treats coming.
Oh, they're so adorable. Personality.
And there's even a petting zoo for us big kids. This is a California king snake. Now, it looks harmless enough, but this is a constrictor. It can actually kill a rattlesnake.
We involve animals in every event that we do, so from land to sea, we offer a little taste of really special and popular animals here.
And the party's just getting started. Our zoo residents may be going to bed, but not these party animals. Dancing DJs, food trucks, and a full bar are all on the after-hours menu.
Animals are asleep. No animals.
Wait, what about the animals?
There's no animals. They're asleep. Even though it's a full mood, and we did go, "Ooh."
I had some, you know, margaritas.
So, this is a party for the big kids?
Yes, it's a party for the big kids, and it's been incredible.
I saw a snake and a turtle, and that's about it.
I love it, I love it. So, I bring them around too. And you're dancing. Yes, we love it. Yes, we've been hitting every spot.
And if you're wondering why people on one of the dance floors are dancing in silence, well, it's the silent disco, of course. All the music you need is in those bright fluorescent headphones.
This is really a chance for L.A. guests to explore the intersection between music, culture, and nature. People have a perception, maybe, that the L.A. Zoo is just for kids, and it's really not. We throw a really good party here.
Somewhere, some animals must be wondering how they can sleep with all that racket.
There'll be one more Roaring Nights event this summer. On September 27th, you must be 21 to get in. For information or tickets, visit lazoo.org. We all know that summer wouldn't be the same without your pick of outdoor movies. In Echo Park, as the season comes to a close, folks came out to enjoy one last flick under the stars.
We do the annual summer movie nights, and today, we are combining with Echo Park Rising, which is another annual event, and we have a theme of music all day, and it's going to lead up to the screening of A Hard Day's Night, of course, with the Beatles. So, we've been working with Combran and the organization and the entire community so we would have a day-long celebration of music and culture here at Echo Park Lake. I have a deep love for all things Beatles. When I turned on my car this afternoon on my way to my first event, the song that came on from the very beginning was "A Hard Day's Night," and I thought, "This bodes well."
It's our ninth annual event. It's been a labor of love. We're all volunteers, and it's a free festival for the entire community. Tonight is really a culmination of a long process of doing something together at the lake, and it's our family stage, and "A Hard Day's Night" is a great way to sort of come together. This is the 50th anniversary of Abbey Road, was what, a week ago? A week and a half ago? Yeah, which is a nice coincidence, and people can take their photo as if they're on Abbey Road.
It's the end of the summer, and it's just a good hang in the park. There's been some cool music. We just saw some tap dancers from the Tapalists, and they were crushing it up there. And, I don't know, it's a beautiful night.
What do you get when you mix confetti cannons with lots of kids and families while a whole lot of summer fun at Chinatown Summer Nights?
This is the second time we've come here this summer. We love Chinatown Summer Nights. We've been coming for years, and the most fun is shooting off the confetti cannons. And my son, who's over there, loves to throw the confetti at, he's throwing it at my father, who's in town.
What's so great about the confetti? Tell me.
We get to jump it out of the air.
It'll take us a week to get all the confetti out of our clothes.
If you love Stevie Wonder, join the celebration of his music at the Levitt Pavilion. Check out some vintage cars at a San Fernando car show. And in the mood for some jerk chicken? Well, don't miss this Jerk Fest. All this and Things to Do. Wonderful, the annual event dedicated to the musical genius of Stevie Wonder, is back. Enjoy a free daytime event for all ages, filled with dancing, food trucks, and live t-shirt screen printing. And of course, DJ Spinus spinning all Stevie exclusives, covers, samples, and remixes. Spend an afternoon among fellow Stevie lovers at Wonderful, happening Sunday, September 1st, beginning at 4:00 p.m. To RSVP, visit concerts.levittlosangeles.org. Moonlight Customs proudly presents the first annual Moonlight Yak's inaugural car show. Bring your family and friends, food and beverages, folding chairs, and be ready to barbecue alongside many of your fellow car culture enthusiasts. Cruise on over to Moonlight Yak's inaugural car show, happening Saturday, August 31st, at Hanson Dan Recreation Center. For more information, check out their listing on Facebook Events. Jerk Fest is a cultural awareness festival that pitches tents at UCLA. Come out and experience delicious dishes like jerk chicken, jerk shrimp, yam, and other authentic island dishes. Not only do you have an opportunity to taste exotic foods from the Caribbean, but enjoy music from internationally renowned acts. Jerk Fest 2019 cooks up a great time on Saturday, August 31st, beginning at 12:00 noon. For ticket information, visit adamari.net. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
to try to protect the environment, economic development, housing, transportation, the needs of senior citizens, and the needs of young people. I believe that it can become one of the great cities of the world. If we can do that, we will have done much, not just for this city, but I think for this nation.[1460.26]
Please take a seat. Shhh. Want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do not have a quorum at this time, but we will shortly. So if we could start out with our presentations, I'd like to recognize Mr. Rue for our presentation. The floor is yours. We will give you... We will give you a minute. Okay, so now, Mr. Rue, in fact, we have a quorum. Mr. Krikorian is here. So, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Busciano Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Harris Dawson moves. Corretts, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. Martinez, seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. Mr. Price, would you lead us in our flag salute today?
Thank you, Mr. President, for this great honor. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Let's go through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, a corrected Plumb Committee report for Item 7 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration. And there is a request to continue that item, Item 7 and 15, to Friday, August 30th.
Okay, unless there's an objection, continue.
Additionally, there is a request to continue Item 1 for 90 days to November 15th.
Fine, continue.
Items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all 6 items.
Then continue.
Items 7 through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members, I don't see any. Let us prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance for Item 8 will be carried over one week to September 3rd unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio has arrived. Okay, continue.
Items 25 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
All right, then, continue.
Items 41 through 43 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Let me defer to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 41 through 43 were all waived by the Budget and Finance Committee. They appear to be routine matters that can be considered in open session. But if members have questions or concerns, now would be the time to hear that.
Do we have cards on these items? Okay.
Yes.
Then let's hold these as well. Continue.
And, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, Mr. Rue. And if we could... Shhh.
Good morning, good morning. Please take a seat. Shhh. Want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do not have a quorum at this time, but we will shortly. So if we could start out with our presentations, I'd like to recognize Mr. Rue for our presentation. The floor is yours. We will give you... We will give you a minute.
...about in Corretts, O'Farrell. Members, please report to the council chambers. Members, please report to the council chambers. Members, please report to the council chambers.
Okay, good morning, good morning. Please take a seat. Shhh. Want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do not have a quorum at this time, but we will shortly. So if we could start out with our presentations, I'd like to recognize Mr. Rue for our presentation. The floor is yours. We will give you... We will give you a minute. Okay, so now, Mr. Rue, in fact, we have a quorum. Mr. Krikorian is here. So, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Busciano Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Harris Dawson moves. Corretts, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. Martinez, seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. Mr. Price, would you lead us in our flag salute today?
Thank you, Mr. President, for this great honor. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Let's go through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, a corrected Plumb Committee report for Item 7 has been posted and circulated for council's consideration. And there is a request to continue that item, Item 7 and 15, to Friday, August 30th.
Okay, unless there's an objection, continue.
Additionally, there is a request to continue Item 1 for 90 days to November 15th.
Fine, continue.
Items 1 through 6 are items noted for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all 6 items.
Then continue.
Items 7 through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members, I don't see any. Let us prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance for Item 8 will be carried over one week to September 3rd unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio has arrived. Okay, continue.
Items 25 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
All right, then, continue.
Items 41 through 43 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Let me defer to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 41 through 43 were all waived by the Budget and Finance Committee. They appear to be routine matters that can be considered in open session. But if members have questions or concerns, now would be the time to hear that.
Do we have cards on these items? Okay.
Yes.
Then let's hold these as well. Continue.
And, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, Mr. Rue. And if we could... Shhh.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Today, we are here to congratulate and honor our outgoing general manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, Gracie Liu. If we could give her a round of applause. Now, Gracie has had a long relationship with this department and with growing our city's incredible neighborhood council system. She has been with Dunn since 2007 and served the past seven years as general manager. As chair of the committee that oversees neighborhood councils, I've had the privilege to work with Gracie on a number of issues. These include our efforts to reform the neighborhood council system and empower the neighborhood voices in City Hall. The neighborhood council system was established 20 years ago, and it is one of the city's best ideas. It's rooted our city in local needs, elevated the voices of everyday Angelenos, and got more people excited and engaged in local government. And I'm not just saying that because I used to be on the neighborhood council myself. But in reality, this system is so crucial to our city. And Gracie has done so much to help it grow. And I know that in this next chapter, our neighborhood council system will continue to grow, and we will continue to work to see it thrive. Fortunately, Gracie isn't going too far and will continue to serve as our city in the personnel department as one of the assistant general managers and as a city engagement officer. In this role, Gracie will bring her superb skills and dedication to strengthen our workforce in recruiting the next generation of dedicated L.A. city employees. Though we are sad to see her go, I am glad that she will still be here, serving our city and empowering our new voices. And to say a few words, I'd also like to bring up a couple of our Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, Commissioner Eli Lippman.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Hello, council members. President, thank you very much. As president of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, I'm just here to really honor and thank Gracie for her dedication to the neighborhood council system. You know, she is the general manager, and as you know, there are 99 neighborhood councils, which most people would think was unmanageable. But she's done an incredible job being there as an advocate for the neighborhood councils, everything from the emails at 1:00 in the morning, following up on the probably hundreds of emails that she gets every day from neighborhood council members, to really creating a staff and environment that really brings the whole team out here. And I think I'd like to recognize them. And they all... They're all... I see a bunch of them. There we go, all sitting kind of here in the house. And really, it's a testament to Gracie how diverse... And really, it's a testament to Gracie how diverse the staff is as part of her department. I think they really represent the best and the brightest we have in the city of Los Angeles, and I think that's really a testament to her. And so, when the mayor decided to elevate her to the Personnel Department, we were very sad, but we also knew it's the right position for her because she's done such an incredible job managing personnel and bringing on the best people in the city to the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. So, I just really want to thank her and recognize her, and thank you so much to the City Council for giving her this honor. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to welcome up the Director of Outreach and Communications from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, and that's Thomas Soon.
Welcome, sir. Welcome.
Good morning, councilmen. January 18th, 2013, right here in Councilen Chambers, the City Council at that time had the opportunity to vote and approve a General Manager, Gracie Liu. So many years have passed since then, and I still remember that day, that actually, the Vice President of the, at that time, was the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, was Len Schaefer, and he was here giving some public comments. And some of the things that he said still rings true today, was that he said that Gracie is going to bring, has brought in a culture of inclusiveness, true. Gracie is not afraid to get her hands dirty. She rolls her sleeves and gets the work done, true as well. And when Gracie first came on board with us, at the Congress of Neighborhoods, there was overwhelming support when all the neighborhood council members stood up in her support. So that's pretty, that was very powerful. And I know that we don't have the whole City Council, all the neighborhood council members here, but I do want to acknowledge the staff that's here supporting Gracie. And I'm going to ask the whole staff to please stand up in honor of Gracie. A lot of times, folks, for our department, we take a lot of hits, we take a lot of criticisms, and sometimes there's praise. But the consistent force that's behind, the driving force of what we do and the mission of neighborhood councils has always been Gracie Liu. And Gracie, I just want to say to you that, from a, from a department perspective, I think I could say this on behalf of everybody, is that we, we look to you as a great leader. We look to you as a rock star. We look to you as someone with poise and dignity in how you handle situations. You always support staff. You always get staffs back. And I'm very proud for myself to call you my leader, my friend. And our department will call you our family. You will always have a home here. And I just want to end this little thing right here, so I know you like musicals, and there's one little musical, and you'll figure out which one it is, but it says, "Who can say that if we change for the better, but because we knew you? Our department knew you. The neighborhood council system knew you. We've all been changed for the good." And I will end with this, the only way that I know that, I know how to end. And that is, Gracie, we love you, and may the force be with you.
Thank you, Thomas. And now, the woman of the hour. The person who literally, I think, has the hardest job, or the hardest department in this Los Angeles City Hall, the person responsible for outreach, empowering and collaborating with 99 neighborhood councils throughout the city of Los Angeles, our departing General Manager, Gracie Liu.
Thank you so much, council member. Thank you, Eli. Thank you, Tom, and Len, and everyone who's here to support me today. I am simultaneously honored and super embarrassed and mortified by this recognition because I feel that any success I've had over the years has really been due to the collaboration and the support that I've had with the City Council and your team, Mayor Garcetti and his staff, City Attorney Fuhr and his amazing crew, in particular Darren Martinez and our Neighborhood Council Advice Division and the Labor Division Attorneys, CAO, CLA Controller, Galpern, our Board of Neighbor Commissioners, the Innovation and Performance Commission, my fellow General Managers, Board of Public Works President Kevin. I also want to thank all of our community members who have partnered with us, like Pat Brown Institute, and also, I need to thank Holly Walcott and General Manager of Personnel, Wendy Macy, for all of their support. And of course, I have to thank my amazing and wonderful staff, both past and current. They really go above and beyond with great heart and empathy in their work, and I really have to appreciate the, my managers, both present and past, Leila Campos, Amanda Ruiz, Sammy Park, Tom Soon, and Mike Fong. And last but never least, my neighborhood councils, I have to thank them. They inspired me every day with the amazing advocacy work that they do for the community. They stepped up whenever the department needed them to. And I know there's some folks, neighborhood councils here, can you please stand up? Please, please, so we can just recognize that you're amazing, and we love you. Thank you. I really want to thank all of you for your graciousness and your generosity and your guidance through these years. This honor really is yours, and I hope to take everything that you've taught me into my new position at City Engagement Officer, the Personnel Department. I really want to thank Mayor Garcetti and Wendy for giving me this opportunity to continue my public service. I'll be helping with recruitment and hiring and engagement and training for the city workforce, and it's my hope that by empowering our city workforce, I'll continue to empower Angelenos and empower L.A. Thank you very, very much.
Now, without further ado, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I am proud to present to Gracie Liu this commendation for your service to our neighborhoods. Thank you, Gracie.
Mr. Corretts, you want to jump into Item 31?
Yes, thank you, colleagues. This is a critical resolution that we oppose SB 58. This is a measure that, according to studies by folks as prestigious as Dr. Jonathan Fielding in a 40-year mega-study, found that all locations that increased the hours in which they could serve alcohol from 2:00 to 4:00 a.m. had increases in DUIs and injuries and deaths. This has a tiny upside. We will try to seem a little more hip than we were and be a little more like New York. There'll also be more revenue for bars and nightclubs, but that revenue will be entirely subsidized and more by the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles. This is a dangerous bill. This is a bill that I believe will cost many lives, and it's a bill in which a 10-city pilot includes Los Angeles because supposedly we're in support. Yet not a single council member, I believe, to date, has endorsed this measure, and a number of us have publicly come out against it, including Mr. Smith, who couldn't be here, but provides bipartisan opposition to this bill. In the state legislature, the state senate representing Los Angeles had not a single representative of ours voting no, I believe because it was falsely stated that the city of Los Angeles is in support. It is critical that we come out in opposition to this bill. Otherwise, its passage is absolutely certain, and it is certain to be signed by the governor who comes out of the alcohol industry. I would ask you all to vote in support of this resolution for the health and safety of our residents and our visitors. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, before we go into public comment, Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to second Mr. Corretts's effort and thank him for his leadership on this issue. You know, this bill has evolved over time, and it used to be the sort of grossest assault on local control by mandating these things on local government. But even in its current form, this bill, if it's enacted, will endanger the people of Los Angeles, because even if we choose to continue to oppose extending the hours, other cities around us will still be able to do that. And so, the same people who are drinking in bars and adjacent cities will be driving through our streets, endangering our pedestrians, endangering our motorists and bicyclists. So, I think it's very important that we speak clearly and loudly on this, and I want to thank Mr. Corretts for his leadership on it.
Okay, all right. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to, why don't we start off, let's go 25 minutes, public comment? Did you hear that, Mr. City Attorney, Madam Clerk? Start off with Brenda Villanueva, Sam Trin, Socorro Chacon, Jose Maga, Adeline Bertha, please come forward, identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Villanueva.
Shhh. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Brenda Villanueva, I'm the co-chair of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. SB 58, as it stands, is an empty promise. Although the sponsors of the bill keep stating that this will increase revenue and business, research shows otherwise. A cost-benefit analysis put out by Alcohol Justice and Alcohol Research Group showed that it would cost L.A. about $52 million annually, and $266.4 million after the five years looking at it conservatively. Aside from that, the bill does not designate any additional funding or assessment of the cost of harm, nor additional resources or consideration for first responders and law enforcement. The costs far outweigh the benefits, not just financially, but in lives as well. I urge our council members to stand with the communities they represent and oppose SB 58. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Sam Trin. I represent Behavioral Health Services, and I oppose SB 58. Working at a center for rehabilitation and substance abuse prevention, I can say that Hollywood suffers from a lot of drug use. A lot of people are recovering from addiction, from opioids, amphetamines, and especially alcohol. But the other face of Hollywood is that there's a lot of late-night mayhem. If you've ever been to Hollywood and Highland at 2:00 in the morning, you know that it's a cesspool of public nuisance. We know from our relationship with Hollywood PD that there's a lot of urination, robberies, even a hit-and-run related to drunk driving. There's been stabbings, shootings. So, I wanted to say that if the city of L.A. just took a second to not sell out to pro-business and development, that they would see that there's a very high social cost in this bill. A lot of people will be harmed, some people will die, and vulnerable communities affected by gentrification towards them will suffer the most.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Socorro Chacon. I work for Social Model Recovery System, an organization with more than 20 years of prevention experiences, working in Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights, and downtown Los Angeles. I'm here on behalf of our coalition members and all these community members to ask you to strongly consider the negative impact that SB 58 may have on our community and ask you not to support it. As in many low-income communities in Boyle Heights, we have more than 200 alcohol outlets, many of which are not responsible business owners. Allowing alcohol sales until 4:00 a.m. will lead to increased DUIs and strain on law enforcement, food responders, emergency department, and the most important, on our community, will not be safe. Please consider our concern as your choice will affect our community.
Thank you. And if I can also, if I can also get, to get in line, Miriam Castro, Daniel Gus, Myra Jimenez, Jonathan Corman, yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Jose Magaña. I work for the Wallas Memorias Project in Highland Park, and I ask City Council members to vote yes on the motion to oppose SB 58. Working at the Y work with LGBT underrepresented folks, and this is going to be detrimental to our community. Also, it's going to increase violence, sexual, sex trafficking, domestic violence, and DUIs. I ask, as part of the organization and as being a gay father and as a veteran, that we vote no on this bill. It's going to lead to more drunk drivers on the streets, people that I don't want hitting my kids one day when they're out in the streets. And it's also going to affect everybody. It's going to affect our brothers and sisters, family members, one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Adeline Bertha. I am a community organizer from Social Model Recovery Systems in Skid Row. SB 58 proposes concerns and endangering people in California, whereas there will be public safety costs to California Highway Patrol and public health costs to Medi-Cal and California's emergency hospitals, and quite likely the cost to cow transfer damage and highway property as well as cost to ABC. Cities in 40-mile radius will bear the cost of DUI, violence, and harms. California already suffers more alcohol-related harm than any other state, $14 billion annually by state and local governments. Again, I discourage the extended hours of alcohol sales, whereas it will bring higher costs to law enforcement, emergency care services, and healthcare services throughout California. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. And before the next speaker, if I can get, I think it's Addie McCabean, Mark Stefanos, Andrew Odom, yes, identify yourself.
Good morning, councilmembers. Daniel Gus, I'm on this side of the rope today specifically for this item, Item 32. This is such a wrong-minded bill. I congratulate Mr. Corretts for being absolutely spot-on on that, and I congratulate Mr. Krikorian because if it's in somebody drinking in Burbank, somebody drinking in Santa Monica, somebody drinking in West Hollywood, they're still coming home through Studio City and Boyle Heights and Sherman Oaks and Venice and Hollywood. There is a tremendous danger there. I would ask the council members to please consider, however, the mixed messages that the council sends by basically rubber-stamping all sorts of alcohol licenses for quote-unquote "convenience." I think Sacramento might get the wrong idea that we're in favor of this based on what really seems to be handing out tons and tons of liquor licenses almost indiscriminately. I think it sends a wrong message. However, on this bill, I fully support Mr. Corretts's motion. I fully support what Mr. Krikorian said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Miriam Castro.
One minute.
Sorry.
If we can get translation, please.
Please.
My name is Miriam Castro. Good morning.
Vengo en representacion de las comunidades de Corrientown.
I come to represent the neighborhoods of Corrientown. A Pico Union. Pico Union. Westlake. Westlake. Somos un grupo que nos llamamos mujeres transformando la comunidad. It is a group of women which is called Women Transforming the Community. Y por lo tanto estamos enteradas. Therefore, we are aware. Del entrenamiento nocturno en California cada año cuesta 50 billones. We're aware that in California, the entertainment business costs over... 2 billones? 50 billion dollars. En violencia relacionada con el alcohol. In regards to the violence related to alcohol. Y 380 millones. 380. Millions annually. En costos médicos. In medical costs. Por accidentes. Because of accidents. Vehiculares. Vehicle accidents. Relacionados con el alcohol. Related to alcohol. 40 años de estudio evaluados por científicos demuestran que entender el horario de venta, que extender el horario de venta. Scientific studies show that by extending the schedule of sales. De alcohol es un riesgo a nuestras vidas. Of alcohol is a risk for our lives. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Kornman. I am a former talent agent and a law student at Southwestern Law School. What I have not heard anyone mention today is whether or not this bill passes, people are going to continue consuming alcohol past the hours of 2:00 a.m. So I don't understand why we would continue to criminalize activity that's going to happen anyways when we could legitimize it and regulate it and create a source of income to put towards real efforts that would curb all of the fears that I've heard today. I understand the fears of drunk driving, but trying to create a way to close bars at 2:00 a.m. isn't a real way to curb that fear. Creating funds for ways to fund alternative transportation, creating a more pedestrian community, and more money towards police enforcement to curb these activities are real ways we can fight this fear. So that's all I have to say from more of a policy standpoint. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And if I could get, if I can get, I think it's Ree- Remy Mark, Cassandra Merez, Mike Guimond, and Ross Gardner. Yes, identify yourself.
Before my time starts, can I make a quick ask?
No, I can't hear you.
Sorry.
Identify yourself.
Yeah, my name is Myra Jimenez. I just wanted to make a quick ask before I start about the community members that are here. We just wanted to really advocate and ensure that the mothers who took the bus here from District 1 in Koreatown are able to speak today. I just wanted to make that ask in terms of the time. I know that there's a bit of a...
I'm gonna just try to get as many people to speak as possible. So go ahead.
Thank you. So, good morning, council members. My name is Myra Jimenez. I am the advocacy manager at Alcohol Justice. We're here to support Councilmember Kretz's motion to oppose State Bill 58. Today, we not only bring ourselves, we also bring the data. And many here dedicate their lives to prevention, alcohol harms, and building healthy communities because we care, but also because it's personal. There are 8,850 DUIs and 2,174 motor vehicle crashes between June 20, June 2017 and June 2018. Using a conservative estimate, research shows we can expect an increase of 809 alcohol-related vehicle crashes under SB 58. Research also shows that patrons intended to leave at midnight have a higher BAC level. Please vote yes today.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, my, hi there. My name is Andrew Odom and I'm a resident of the beautiful walkable neighborhood of Koreatown, a proud member of the nightlife community, the Los Angeles Nightlife Alliance, and I'm here to encourage all of you to support SB 58. SB 58 represents an opportunity for a great city to implement a progressive nightlife policy that has the ability to celebrate our nightlife cultural institutions and doesn't have to be a blank check that is quoted in the statistics of many in opposition. You have that power. As a gay man, I found my community, real and true community, within nightlife spaces. But gay bars and clubs have closed in record numbers over the past few years. Councilmember O'Farrell was able to come out to DTLA Proud and experience the beauty of our community. But that beauty of our community, those people, do not exist in a bubble. They exist in our nightlife spaces and they are under threat. And I encourage all of you to come about this in a very smart and progressive manner. Not all of us need 4:00 a.m. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Adee McCabean. I'm the owner of Exchange L.A., a venue in downtown. I'd like to come in support of the bill. I can speak only from limited experience of what we have. We are one of the first venues to be allowed to operate, not serve alcohol past 6:00 a.m. So we have a clear observation of people's behavior after 2:00 a.m. Our venue has a slow egress of people. Some leave at 2:00 a.m. We don't suffer the same issues at other venues where they dump everybody, so there's a natural progression of people leaving. Since we've been able to operate in the later hours, our dance club has massively increased in business. Again, this is a baby step towards actually becoming a global venue. We're currently ranked number 19 in the world, coming up from being a distressed property probably about 10 years ago. There's also a massive change in customer behavior that we've observed over the years. We know that people are moving towards Uber more and more. And while drunk driving is an issue, we support the programs to mitigate it and sober-up fans. We see that even our valet service that used to be a profit center has now become a cost of the car.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Mark Stefanos. I'm a LA native, born and raised, and actually woke up early today to come and speak here. That's not because I'm a delinquent, but because I happen to work for an organization that's based out of Eastern Europe. And thankfully, there isn't a city council district in this city that doesn't have an after-hours drinking spot, and that's why I'm here in support of SB 58. You guys might think that drinking doesn't happen after 2:00 a.m., but the reality is that it very much does. And what we learned from the '20s and from prohibition is that you can prevent stuff from, try to prevent stuff from happening, but it just drives it underground. What we do know, that what the 2:00 a.m. last call does, is it makes kids binge drink. They start drinking at 11:30, they throw back down those beers as fast as they can, and then when they're kicked out of bars at 2:00 a.m., they're drunk on the street. So if we want to prevent violence and public safety issues, then, you know, we need to think more proactively about how to have...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Cassandra Maraz. As a prevention coordinator from Pueblo y Salud and a proud member of CAPA and LA DAPA, I'm here to ask you all to support Councilmember Kretz in opposing SB 58. We are concerned that this bill will bring significant fiscal impact and a strain to city resources and communities. As mentioned before, the city of LA is being listed as a supporter of the bill in Sacramento, which is inaccurate as the council has not taken a stance. However, today is the day that you'll be able to stand up to Sacramento and let them know that this bill will drastically impact the lives and families of children in Los Angeles at the expense of private interest and has no business in our city. This bill will regulate hours of sale but completely disregard the regulation of harm. So today I ask you, what is more important to you, the health and safety of your constituents or the couple of dollars this law claims it will make? Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello there. My name is Ross Gardner and I'm the co-founder of the Los Angeles Nightlife Alliance, the group that is responsible for organizing the support here for SB 58 today. We launched in early 2018 and since then, we've hosted a roundtable with Senator Weiner and Assemblymember Santiago. We've done town halls, dozens of meetings, workshops, and nightlife safety trainings. Now, we've had a working committee looking at SB 58 for the past year, and we've come to the conclusion that this could be a very positive bill for the city of Los Angeles, should the pilot program be implemented strategically and with the aims of stimulating culture and small businesses. The most vocal narrative around SB 58 is one of alcohol-fueled mayhem, but ours is a narrative of vast cultural opportunity. We see SB 58 as an opportunity for important venues and spaces to stabilize their business model by generating more revenue and keep up with the pace of gentrification in this city. We see a path towards legitimacy for the thousands of people working and creating and participating in undergrounded DIY nightlife every single weekend in the city of Los Angeles. And we envision a thriving global city.
Thank you.
Rich with diverse culture for the 2028 Olympics. Thank you very much.
And if I could get, if I could get Mitch Edelson, Jasmine Garcia, Derek Marshall, Vanessa Hernandez, and Veronica Cruz. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Remy Mark. I'm a homeowner and business owner here in Los Angeles and also representing Los Angeles Nightlife Alliance. I think it's pretty clear from the speakers here that there's a division on this issue. But I think the bill actually is written with the kind of flexibility and policymaking that will allow you on the council and us in the neighborhoods to form really smart policy on where and when these permits are allowed to extend hours beyond 4, beyond 2:00 a.m. I think that's the important part, is it allows for more community control and where neighborhoods are involved, we can protect citizens, and where maybe established entertainment districts. Shutting this bill down would not allow us to do that. Where we can enrich our nightlife here, we should move forward, and where we can protect citizens, we should also move forward. So I think we should go forward with SB 58 so that we can strengthen nightlife and the communities around us. Thank you.
Yes.
Hello.
Ooh. My name is Michael Guimond. I'm in the commercial real estate industry. I took off work today to be down here and speak to all of you. I'm in support of SB 58 and I think that everybody in this room should be as well. If you are under the impression that alcohol consumption does not exist after 2:00 o'clock in the morning, I urge you to spend some time in the Arts District or in downtown LA to see what kind of parties exist. If we regulate this bill and we regulate what happens between 2:00 to 4:00 a.m., our streets will become more safe as it pertains to alcohol consumption and the people that are spending their time out at night between 2:00 and 4:00. Please think very, very carefully about Los Angeles and the future of the city and think about how we stand on a global scale compared to other cities like Berlin, New York City, and London, that all can have a viable nightlife culture until 4:00 in the morning, but experience more safety when it comes to alcohol consumption. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Good morning, council members. My name is Jasmine Garcia and I am here on behalf of Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. I work in the prevention field in the Koreatown, Pico Union, and Westlake area. My day-to-day duties include addressing substance abuse issues and providing workshops to families and youth. In my time working in this field, I have seen and heard firsthand the destructive path alcohol can leave on family units, especially children. The extension of alcohol sale hours not only increases destruction, but further normalizes a culture where excess consumption is accepted. I'm here to ask council members to oppose SB 58 in the city of Los Angeles. The human cost of this bill is far greater than any potential gain in revenue from alcohol sales. Thank you.
Thank you. And before the next speaker, if I can get Mr. Previn, Irma Fabian, and a Michael Schillstone. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Good morning, council. My name is Mitch Edelson. I own several dance halls and restaurants. Some hold over 1,000 people. I hear a lot about DUIs here today, but, you know, what I see at my club is that we can have over 1,000 people in the club and the parking lot is not even half-full. You know, now after the advent of Uber and Lyft, we're seeing a great reduction of people who are driving to the club and thus not drinking and driving. You know, I heard Councilmember Kretz mention a study that said that cities that extended their drinking hours saw a rise in drunk driving, but how many of those municipalities, major municipalities, did that after the advent of Uber and Lyft? And I think that dumping everyone onto the street, and what I've seen personally at other venues, is when you dump everyone on the street at 2:00 in the morning and expect everyone to make the right decision, it creates a big problem on the street and a big problem for our law enforcement officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Sure. My name is Derek Marshall. Good morning, everyone. I'm a community organizer and member of the LGBT community. I also work at Nation Builder. I would like to express my support this morning for SB 58 as an acknowledgement of the cultural benefits that come from legalizing the spaces where artists and members of marginalized communities celebrate in community. Other major international cities like Berlin or New York have lengthened hours and they've become safer. We have a tendency in the United States to legislate where we shouldn't. When we banned alcohol during prohibition, it took us decades to eliminate the mafia. Folks will drink whether we legalize these spaces or not, and so I urge the council, please, to legalize and regulate. That is the safer vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Veronica Cruz.
If we could get the translator.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Veronica Cruz. Vengo representando la comunidad de padres de manos unidas de Koreatown. I represent the community of Compton and Chinatown. Did you say Chinatown? Koreatown, I'm sorry. Para mí es importante tener una comunidad segura. To me, for me, it's very important to have security in my community. Ya que pienso que todos aquí tenemos hijos o nosotros mismos vamos al trabajo, necesitamos caminar seguros y con una comunidad sin violencia. Since most of us here have children and a lot of us walk to go to work, we need to do it in safe streets and with a community that lacks violence. Extender las horas de alcohol nos afecta a todos, ya que la ciudad no tiene los suficientes fondos. To extend the hours of alcohol affects all of us, since the city does not have enough funds. Esperamos que nos apoyen y voten a favor para tener una comunidad segura. Gracias. We expect you to support us in order to have a secure neighborhood. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Good morning, council members. My name is Vanessa Hernandez and I'm here to represent the community of Manos Unidas of Koreatown. And as a mother, it's important for me to have a safe and healthy environment for my children. SB 58 is not going to help with us. I need you, please, having consideration, all the departments, like a police department, medical department, so everything is going to be in danger for our kids, especially my daughter is going to school walking. So even for us, when we go to work, so please have a consideration to say no to the SB 58. Thank you.
Thank you. And before, if I can get Maria Sobranis, Ms. McAllister, and Cory Schmidt. Yes, please identify yourself.
Good morning. I'm Michael Schillstone with Central City Association.
What was that name again?
Michael Schillstone.
Gotcha.
We're here to support SB 58 and ask council to do the same. This bill gives cities a choice and flexibility to extend alcohol service hours beyond 2:00 a.m. No cities would be forced to extend their hours. This bill would mean that LA could join top tourist destinations like New York, Chicago, Atlanta, and New Orleans in offering late-night options for residents and visitors. LA would be a stronger competitor for tourism, conventions, and trade shows, which are critical to our local economy. In downtown LA, the region's Center for Growth, Entertainment, and Culture, this bill would further add to the vibrancy of our neighborhood and support a thriving 24/7 environment. Overall, this bill will benefit communities. It will create jobs, increase local tax revenues, support local businesses, and enliven downtowns and other entertainment districts. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Previn.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And I have to say, when I hear that the, one of the arguments for, you know, opening up to serving liquor between 2:00 and 4:00 is to keep pace with gentrification, it makes me wonder, what are, what are people thinking about? Is the idea that we need to expand opportunities for getting drunk in the middle of the night in our neighborhoods? I mean, we live in the valley, some of us, where a day does not go by where someone is not motored down in the middle of the night. And, you know, a lot of the accidents that take place on the roads, a lot of them, a high percentage are, involve alcohol. And I don't understand how, I mean, Kretz is certainly no big hero here, and the mayor has really done a disservice to the city by creating this false dichotomy. And I'd like to go around the room on a vote on this one, so that we can see how each of you vote individually. Because I got to tell you, this is really a centerpiece of what's wrong with Los Angeles, is that we are building a kind of party town. This is not Ibiza. This is Los Angeles. You know, we're not, we're not all-night revelers. We're people who go to work in the morning and do various things and try to take our children safely around. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker, please identify, and I'm looking for Cory. If you're here, please get up. Okay. And then also, if I can get Eva Aguilar, Agila. Yes.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Irma Fabian.
My name is Irma Fabian.
Vengo del Distrito 1.
I come from District 1.
Y vivo en el área de Pico Union.
And I live in Los Angeles of Pico Union, in the area of Pico Union.
Bueno, mis totes esta de que como comunidad yo pienso...
The thing is that as a community, I believe, or I think...
Que debemos mejorar la situación de vida.
That we must improve our livelihood.
Que vivimos debido a que nuestra juventud y nuestra niñez...
Since our... Since our childhood and our young people, our children, actually, and our young people.
Cada día está empeorando la situación de vida que llevan.
The life they have, it's getting worse on a daily basis.
Y me gustaría que tomen la consideración.
And I would like you to consider.
De que mejoremos esta vida para nuestros hijos.
To improve this life for our children.
Porque son el futuro de nuestro país.
Because they are the future of our country.
Y de Los Angeles.
And of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ms. McAllister.
Yes, Patricia McAllister here. I'm against this SB 58 bill. We don't need any more alcohol sales. Now, I want everybody to know that this is a Democratic, all of these members are Democrats. Even Bloomingfield, he votes directly with them. So don't let him fool you that he's a Republican. He votes with the Democrats, all of you are Democrats. They're bringing more alcohol into our city. They've, they're, therefore, legalizing prostitution for children. They've done all of this. We have 54 blocks, 54 blocks of homeless people on Skid Row. The Democrats are behind all of this. Now they want to put more alcohol out there. A lot of those people on Skid Row are alcoholics. That's how they got on Skid Row. They're alcoholics. We got them all around the city, alcoholics. Now, you want people who go on to work at 6:00 in the morning and 5:00 in the morning running into drunk drivers who just got out of the booze house, the tavern, at 4:00 o'clock. This is a bunch of bull. We're going to get all of you out of office.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay. Just give me a minute.
Okay. My name's Cory Schmidt, for the record. Okay, so, man, do I have a lot to say. But since we're speaking on 31, let's talk about that. Alcohol. So you guys want to increase the hours of alcohol? And I get that. It's more fun. But the thing is, is that as other people have said, alcohol continues to be consumed after those hours. So, you know, it's a restriction. It's, we have to keep it restricted because alcohol causes problems. How many people have you seen fight, stoned out of their mind? Not like any. But I used to work at a bar and people would just get wasted and then they would start fighting. So you want to increase all of that after hours. What I say is, if you want to drink after 2:00 a.m., leave early, go to the store, buy some more, then you can drink after. But we need to keep it regulated.
Thank you. And if I can get Hannah Yee, Rika Blanks, Isaac Hong. Yes, please identify yourself. And we'll be cutting it off after a couple of speakers, okay? We're already over. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Eva Agila and I'm an artist and art director of the 501(c)(3) Arts Organization. I'm here in support for SB 58. Los Angeles cannot be a world-class city without a 4:00 a.m. bill. Important cultural events happen overnight. I've seen the impact it has done on other metropolitan cities like New York and Austin. If we want to keep growing as a global cultural hub, we have to pass this five-year pilot program. Additionally, Los Angeles becomes a ghost town after 2:00 a.m. If nightclub stayed open past 2:00 a.m., it would turn L.A. into a livelier city, making it safer for everyone around. Thank you.
And what was your name again? Miss, what was your name again? Your name, what was it? We didn't hear it.
Eva Agila.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Hannah Yee and I work with youth in Koreatown and also I'm a member of the Coalition to Prevent Alcohol-Related Harms in L.A. Metro, also known as COPOM. First of all, I want to thank you for listening to our concerns from last week and agendizing the resolution to oppose SB 58, also known as the 4:00 a.m. Bar Bill. In particular, thank you, Councilmember Coretts and Councilmember Krikorian, for also thinking about community safety. I'm here today to ask you to continue your steps in protecting our community in L.A. by voting yes on the resolution to oppose SB 58. As you may know, many people in L.A. drive everywhere, not like London and Berlin, where public transportation is accessible. And the effects of drinking until 4:00 a.m. will increase DUIs and cause DUIs to expand all over Southern California. This can hurt people even outside of L.A. going to work early in the morning or dropping their children off at school. I hope you all will do the right thing and vote yes on the resolution to oppose SB 58. Please do not jeopardize the lives of the community at the expense of private interests. Thank you again for listening to our concerns and for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name is Rika Blanks and I am a member of the Coalition to Prevent Alcohol-Related Harms in L.A. Metro, also known as COPOM. Just like many of the speakers before me, I am here to ask you all to support Councilmember Coretts in opposing SB 58. I currently live and work in Koreatown, a community that already suffers from many alcohol-related problems, just like many of the other neighborhoods in Los Angeles. As your constituents, our community members deserve better and L.A. does not need two more hours of alcohol sales to be a top tourist destination. We are already one without it. Please support the resolution to oppose SB 58 and send a message to Sacramento that our community's health and safety are far more valuable than the small revenue of additional alcohol sales. Thank you.
Thank you. And before, I'm going to call up Lydia Lessing or Leasing and Michael Jung. Please come forward. They'll be the last two speakers. Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. L.A. City Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Isaac Hong and I am a member of the Coalition to Prevent Alcohol-Related Harms in L.A. Metro area. Today, I'm here to ask you to vote yes to Councilman Paul Kreis' resolution to oppose SB 58. Nightlife costs California taxpayers over $50 billion annually due to alcohol-related violence and $380 million annually in medical costs for alcohol-related vehicular accidents. Forty years of peer-reviewed scientific research shows extending the hour of alcoholic beverage sales is a risk on all our lives and makes an already unsafe time of night even more dangerous for pedestrians and also people who drive. Even the most cautious community members cannot protect themselves or their family from the exposure to late-night alcohol-related harms unless they opt to keep their family from driving cars, walking into school, riding the bus, riding in cars, and going to outdoor events. So I believe as a responsible adult, we shouldn't take advantage from the youth and also community members. Thank you.
Next, please.
Good morning, council members. My name is Lydia Leasing and I am a part of the Coalition to Prevent Alcohol-Related Harms in L.A. Metro. I work in Koreatown, Los Angeles. We are disproportionately affected by alcohol outlets and are historically targeted by the alcohol industry for profits over health. Extending hours from 2:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. is going to hurt our community more with alcohol-related harms. As a Korean-American and concerned about my community, Koreans have a history of binge-drinking culture and this would only exacerbate the issue. Please vote yes for the SB 58, please oppose the SB 58 resolution. Thank you, council, for your time.
Good morning, council members and Mr. President of the council. My name is Michael Jung and I am a resident of the city of Los Angeles. As a current student studying policy at UCLA, I believe that SB 58's regulation will ultimately hurt the public health of Los Angeles community members and their lives as well. SB 58, or as well known as the 4:00 a.m. Bill, will further normalize alcohol abuse and will bring great harm for the community and especially for the youth. And in spite of the additional revenue to the city from alcohol sales, I believe that there is no price worth than the health of our community members. So I beg of you, council members, to please do not allow the 4:00 a.m. bill to pass. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So all of those who didn't get a opportunity to speak your name will go into the record. I'd like to recognize Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a couple of questions for, I guess, the CLA or the CL? CLA.
Please come forward.
So I read the various analysis that are currently available, which is not so robust. But do we have an estimate of law enforcement cost if this bill was to go through, through 3:00 a.m. or 4:00 a.m.?
No, we don't have an estimate of those costs at this time.
Okay. So do you know when this bill is going to be voted on?
The bill is on the Assembly Appropriations Committee agenda and they are obligated to pass a bill no later than this Friday, August 30th. So that's the last day to be heard in committee.
Oh, so this Friday is the last day to be heard?
It's Friday's the last day, yes.
Okay. And does the bill, and I've been looking through the bill, does it have any provisions for funding or for funding for enforcement in particular and most particular local jurisdiction funding?
I don't currently see any funding for local governments in this bill at all. Since the bill sets up an option, an opportunity for a local jurisdiction to make a decision, my guess is that the state would not step in and provide any funding for those situations.
Yeah. How convenient for them, right? You know, colleagues, I'm a little concerned about, you know, as a former nonprofit director and someone who's worked in social services, I, and seeing a lot of my friends from the social services community here, I am very concerned about alcoholism. I am very concerned about drunk driving. And I am very concerned about public safety. But from what I hear today and from what I know, I believe this issue has been framed by advocates on both sides as alcohol, you know, alcohol sales or drunk driving versus revenues for a city. And I think that's framed wrong. You know, if there, if it was shown that a limited, but highly restricted and highly funded and enforced program was instituted in the city of L.A. and it showed that it actually improved our public safety or improved, or reduced drunk driving, then I think that's something that we could all support. However, that's the point. There has been no studies done yet. And it's, and I believe this is a little premature that we, whether supporter or go against it because, you know, as the mayor stated, this gives, this bill, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. CLA, it gives us the ability for local governments to be able to study it and engage our communities and public safety officials to determine that if any changes could be implemented here in Los Angeles, correct?
That's my understanding.
So I think we would have that opportunity locally to figure out if this is a bill that would hurt or help public safety or financially. And you know, as for the local control argument that's been said, you know, I actually feel that this expands local control. And we can't have it both ways. You know, we can't ask the state to give us local control when it comes to housing, yet when it comes, but asking the state to give us a blanket rule when it comes to CUPs. So, I mean, that's my version, that's my take of it. And at this time, I can't support this resolution because I would like to see further studies carried out to see if this could actually help public safety implications. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you. I too want to echo Mr. Ru's comments here. Let's be reminded of, the name of this bill is "Let Our Communities Adjust Late Night." It's a local act. And as we, as a city, we are member cities of the California League of Cities, National League of Cities. And what we do here, we value and advocate for local control. And I believe this bill allows us to see if indeed the extension of hours into 4:00 a.m. is going to work for us or won't work for us. And the ability here, as indicated in the bill and has support of our local legislators representing the city of L.A., it does require law enforcement agencies to come before us, including CHP, to provide the legislature with the report on the regional impact of additional hour services areas as specified. So I, I too, like Mr. Ru, will not support what we have before us here because of the preservation of local control. And this is something that we advocate for moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
So, a couple of things, members. You know, I've stood up time and again and made the local control argument, especially when it comes to housing. But it's not like this is a situation where the people of Los Angeles or this council have been clamoring to say, you know, what we really need is to expand the drinking hours in Los Angeles. If only it weren't, if only it was, if only we could get liberty to do that from Sacramento. I haven't heard that. I've never heard a single member of this council propose that. I've never heard, you know, anybody out there in the community say, what we really need in this city is more drinking for longer hours. Doggone it, I wish we could do that if only Sacramento would get out of our way. I've never once heard that argument being made. So to make this a local control argument would require first that this was something we wanted to do. And I've never heard that argument be made. So that's number one. Number two, a number of the members from the industry have come up here and talked about, well, there's drinking going on already. I could take you downtown and show you where all the drinking goes on after hours. So we should regulate it. I am tired of people coming before this council and saying, you know, these things are going on already. These things that are adverse to our community are already going on. So you might as well just yield to it and regulate it. How many times, how many times have we done that very thing? How many scooters do we see around the city now on sidewalks? Everybody's going to say, well, they're going to do it anyway. You might as well just do, let them do it and try and regulate it. Or, you know, you could name the list of things, whether it's marijuana dispensaries or scooters or, you know, any of these other things that business comes in here and says, we're going to do it anyway. So you might as well create a regulatory framework. Well, you know, why should we? How about the regulatory framework is what it has been for many, many years, which is stop serving alcohol before 2:00 a.m.? There, we have our regulatory framework. It's in place. And then we can go and enforce the law if people are violating that. That's our regulatory framework. This is just, this is the, this is a bill that appears to me to be driven by industry's desire to make more money and putting the people of Los Angeles at risk in order to do it. And it's nothing less than that. So I call on your "I" vote for Mr. Coretts's motion. I call upon us all to let Sacramento know, thanks, but no thanks. We're not asking for this and we would rather not have it. And we would for sure rather not have this in a city that is surrounded by the city of Los Angeles, serving alcohol until 4:00 a.m. so that those people can leave those bars in West Hollywood and drive through our city streets. We would prefer not. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Coretts, for bringing this motion. And thank you to everyone who's come out to speak to us on this issue. Folks know that we worked a long time at Community Coalition on the over-concentration of alcohol outlets in South L.A. and partnered with people around the city, including the Northeast San Fernando Valley. The, a couple of things I'd like to add to the discussion. One, I'd like for all of us, every time one of these things comes up, to acknowledge that it almost never makes sense to have one rule for the entire state of California. Most of our districts are diverse enough where one rule for the whole district doesn't even make sense. So just put a pin in that. I intend to support Councilmember Coretts's motion on this notion. And I think it's something that, a message we want to send to Sacramento. I have at my western border, a half a mile from my western border, a casino in Inglewood that stays open all night, right now. So Inglewood will get to decide if they serve alcohol till 4:00 a.m., except the minute the people leave. You can't get out of that casino without going into District 11 on the west side or District 8 on the east side. Can't do it. And then there's Glendale and there's Pasadena and there's Long Beach that border a lot of our districts. And so until there's some type of way where everybody that's impacted by something gets taken into account so that San Fernando, the city of San Fernando can't make a rule without consulting District 6 and 7, until we have something like that, it's very difficult to support an expansion of alcohol consumption this early and, this late into the morning. So again, I will be voting "I" with Member Coretts.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, I just want to make it absolutely clear on my concern about this resolution. Some people are advocating for more revenues, more ability to drink. But actually, that's not what I'm focused on. I see this as an opportunity to increase public safety, to make sure that we can protect our streets. I don't care about the revenue argument. I don't care about the more drinking argument. This is an opportunity for our city to be proactive, not reactive. And I think. And I think, and I think it was, and I think it was presented before, and I think it was presented before, just like the scooter issues. Yes, they're annoying. They could be annoying, and they are a nuisance. However, it is the future. It is how we are going to have a multimodal strategy where we decrease traffic and solve that first and last mile. It is that piece of that puzzle that will help us solve this traffic problem. So why, and not to say that the scooter situation is going to work, but it is an opportunity for us to be proactive, not reactive to something that happens. So I don't want to frame this as a pro-drinking against drunk driving. No, I want to see how we could use this bill, if it's possible. If it's not, then we, as a city of L.A., will not vote for it. But see if we could use this bill to, to make sure that we reduce drunk driving, that we make sure our streets are more safe. So, and that's what I want to see.
Hey, hey, let's quiet, quiet, quiet. Before I call on Mr. Coretts to close, I just feel compelled to say this. Members, we are the second biggest city in this country. When individuals that are in the state legislature wants to do something that affects the second largest city in this country, they should talk to us before they make proposals, so that we can be engaged at that point. So I will be supporting Mr. Coretts, because I think that it's important that our colleagues in Sacramento recognize and respect the members of this council, because we represent the second largest city in this nation. And if you want to do something this big, it should begin with conversations with us. Mr. Sedia.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I was going to basically say what you said. Mr. Kukorian, you have said it all, and you've been quite eloquent in stating that. We always ask the question, what problem are we going to solve? Every time in my staff, when we get together about what positions to take, we're asking, what problem are we solving? And then what other unintended consequences exist? You know, in this discussion, there's a lot of merit on both sides. It's a, it's an impressive debate and discussion, because there is merit to the point that people do binge from 1:30 to 2:00, 2:30. There's a lot of pressure. There is a lot of merit. You can look at New York, you can look at Chicago, where people aren't pushed out, but they kind of, you know, find their end and find their limit and leave. There are a lot of valid points to be made to that, but you said it best, Mr. President, those should happen before this discussion with our city, not after. And so I am pleased to be here. There are many representatives from my community who are here, and those concerns that they raise are also very legitimate. Substance abuse, alcohol abuse, I'm very familiar with both of these. They play a damaging role in the development of a community. It doesn't seem, as Mr. Kukorian said, to be a community clamoring for this. And so while the rest of the world may be operating in one way, or much of the world, the bigger cities of the world, and we are preparing to, to move towards being a global city that's a host to many major events, at this point, much like in many of the other new phenomenons, whether it's the scooters or other modes of transportation, I think things have to be placed in a historical and social context. And within that framework, with respect to, with respect to my district and respect to my community, I join Mr. Coretts and Mr. Kukorian in their efforts to ensuring that local control does mean local control, and it means it at the front end of the conversation. And we are manifesting that in this vote, and not on the back end, at the grace of some other elected from some other place that does not understand the social and cultural development of our community.
Mr. Coretts, close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually somewhat shocked that there's any opposition to this bill on this council. I'm really stunned. So I want to make a few points. One, this bill is being held in the Appropriations Committee. So the Assembly is looking at the cost to government of this bill. They are not studying the costs to local government, they're only studying the cost to state government. Now, here's a study that was done in July by the Alcohol Research Group. It shows that conservatively, it will cost us $250 million over five years. That's their conservative number. Their less conservative number is a billion dollars in the next five years. Could we use that billion dollars to help solve the homeless crisis? Or is it more important to allow an extra two hours of drinking, so more people are exposed to injuries and death? There is no funding in this for local government, so it's all up to us. We spend that up to a billion dollars. And then there's the argument that Uber and Lyft have solved this problem. So of course drunk driving has disappeared. It hasn't. It's just as bad as ever. And I can tell you, I was on the West Hollywood City Council for 13 years. I observed our bars at 2:00 in the morning. When we only had taxis, taxis appeared like piranha at 2:00 in the morning. Everybody that wanted a ride and didn't take their own car got a ride. It wasn't that hard. But people still drive, and the place they will be most likely to drive to is West Hollywood, which has hundreds of bars and restaurants and nightclubs, and will absolutely participate in this. And West Hollywood is a linear city, so people may be driving in West Hollywood for 15 seconds to get to their bar, and then they will be driving for 10 or 15 minutes in council districts 5 and 4, the surrounding districts to West Hollywood. So even if we vote not to open up Los Angeles to 4:00 A.M. once this bill passes, we will have our two districts most likely to be devastated by drunk driving injuries and deaths. And we don't get a penny from the state for law enforcement or any other expenses. Also, there's an incredible fiction, which I heard for the first time here from bar owners and restaurants. Oh, we don't stop drinking until at 2:00 A.M., we just keep serving alcohol. Well, number one, I don't believe it. Number two, if it's true, there's a lot of places that are going to be shutting down really soon in the Arts District, because this is, this gets enforced. This is not a law that never gets enforced, this is a law that always gets enforced. You get caught serving to one person after 2:00 A.M., you may be gone. But let's assume they're right. So they don't really follow this law, it's very loose. They let people drink till 2:30 or 3:00 o'clock. Well, how much better is that going to be at 4:00 A.M.? Do we want people drinking until 4:30 or 5:00 A.M.? And then getting into traffic and mixing it up with the early commuters? This is nuts. This is the worst argument I have ever heard. I think it's an absolute fiction. Now, the idea that I know everyone in the legislature has told is there are no studies. There was a 40-year study by no less than Dr. Jonathan Fielding. Other countries, including the United States, everywhere, more drunk driving injuries, more drunk driving deaths, more assaults. That's what we can expect here. And we have this most recent study, more costs. And that includes the revenue, that subtracts out the revenue, to get to an estimate as high as $1 billion. So do we want to protect the safety of our residents? Do we want to spend a billion dollars that we could be spending on solving the homeless crisis, and instead solve the lack of drinking before, between 2:00 A.M. and 4:00 A.M. crisis? Where's the issue? Where's the need? If we're wrong, the worst thing that happens is we have a little less drinking. The argument in favor is also that if you drink till 4:00 A.M., it'll make you a safer driver. That's the argument in the legislature. You'll drink more slowly, so you won't get as drunk somehow. If you really believe that, I invite you to vote in opposition to my resolution. But if you, you know you believe in common sense, you know how this is going to turn out. So I ask you, I plead with you, to vote for the residents of the city of Los Angeles and elsewhere, and to vote for their lives, and to vote yes on this resolution.
All right. Okay, okay. Shh. All right, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 2 noes.
All right, that is approved. Okay, let's move on to, let's move on to item 39. I want to, I have some public comment on this. Carmen, are you here? Come on down. Monica Delatorre, Sandra Martin. We're on item 39. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Sandra Martin. I'm a PSR-3. I'm a 911 operator, dispatcher, and instructor, 20 years. I have an audio clip for you, provided by LAPD Media Relations. It's also available on YouTube.
Self-bowled for 50, and 20, male, black, gray sweater, brown pants, approximately 30 years of age, 6 foot. He's running. One bow through the cut.
Okay, Ms. Martin, I was just, I can't, you'll have to explain this to her. That goes outside of the rules of the council, and that was just explained to me.
Explain what it is. Do you want to explain what it is?
It was an officer emergency help, and I don't think the city council understands the, what 911 operators have to do and what the toll it takes on us emotionally. I'm in support of the Emergency 911 Saves Act.
Okay, I'm going to give you a few more minutes, because it's been a little noisy. You didn't understand. A few more seconds, not minutes. And so if you, Mr. Spindler, if I have to call your name again, it'll be to remove you, okay? So go ahead.
I'm here in support of the Emergency 911 Saves Act. That's to help 911 operators become first responders or be reclassified as first responders. I don't think the majority of the public understands the toll that 911 takes on you handling suicides, people being put on fire. This takes a toll on all of us, and we're not considered emergency personnel until a riot, fire, disaster, earthquake hit. Then now we're considered emergency personnel. So this is in support of our reclassification. We're currently classified as clerks, typists, administrative personnel, which we are not. We are highly trained and highly, we have a special training. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of city council. I'm PSR-3 Monica Delatorre, and I have been a 911 operator, dispatcher for over 23 years, and classified as an administrative and supportive, support worker. Public safety communicators, telecommunications are the first point of contact for police and medical, not only to the citizens of Los Angeles, the second largest city in the nation, but to all 10,000 LAPD officers in the field 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including holidays. In the event of a natural disaster, an earthquake, the massive fires, a terrorist attack, active shooters, the 911 operator will still be seated and will not be allowed to leave and be able to coordinate the resources needed, as in the fire department, bomb squad has met. We are there to help the citizens of Los Angeles 24 hours a day, but still be there to answer all the frantic 911 emergency calls by the citizens of Los Angeles. And at the end of the day, we are still recognized as administrative and supportive.
Thank you. Carmen.
Did you hear me? Yes, no, I didn't. Yes, pardon. Good afternoon. I'm Carmen Hayes Walker, President ASME Local 3090. So Congresswoman Norma Torres, you know, started as a 911 dispatcher. She was 17 years here at LAPD. At that time, Norma stood up with the, for the dignity and respect of the workers that were here at LAPD at that time. Norma has never, ever forgotten what her role was as a 911 dispatcher, and she told me, actually herself, that she wakes up still sometimes with some of those calls that she took at that time. I want to thank you for this resolution, and, my workers here asked me to read something for you. The resolution before you, H.R. 1629, Emergency Service Act, is support of reclassifying the public safety telecommunications from clerical support to protective occupation. We thank you for that support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cory, are you on this? And I think, Spindler, Cory, you, okay, Mr. Spindler.
These people do a remarkable job. March 30th, 2017, I was sitting in my car, on the phone with a reporter, and one of you guys, one of you in this room, had one of your staffers tell the CHP to call one of these folks, and falsely tell them something, and I nearly lost my life. Well, I have that recording. They calmly took the facts, and they stated, did this person threaten anybody? No. They had that class, that professionalism, to know, and that recording shows what they do. They're underpaid, they're underappreciated, and to that woman that took that call that nearly terminated my life, I want her to get restitution and damages for what you did to use EMS to try to perpetrate a fraud. Fuck you, Herb Weston, you're a piece of shit!
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Ms. McAllister, I think you have some more time. So you have two minutes, and then you're general, and you have items 32, 33, and 35.
Yes, item 32, here, Paul Kukorian, he wants to build some affordable housing with HHH money. Well, I've driven by two of his developments that he was supposed to spend with HHH money to tear down houses and build affordable housing, and he hasn't built a thing. We need people to follow up on this, because they put these items on the agenda, they get this money, and they're not doing anything. This site is at 11471 Chandler Boulevard to 13160 Raymer Street. So he wants to build bridge housing facilities. We need to follow up. I'm doing the driving, we need more of you to drive by and come here and tell the people what they're doing here. Number 33, we need to follow up on this one, 13 million to finance a new construction unit. 35 units to Rose Apartments at 718 to 720 Rose Avenue. So that's Bloomingville and Bonning. We need people to drive by and let us know what's going on. I also want to, I have also on here the alcohol agenda item, and as I said before, alcoholism is a problem in the United States. So we don't need any more alcoholics in Los Angeles. We've got hundreds of thousands of them, and it's not about money, Coretts. Busciano, he voted for the alcohol. He's trying to run for mayor. We don't want to elect anyone from this council to be mayor of this city. That's what they're doing. They're following each other and trying to run for mayor. Same thing with Garcetti, he used to be on this council. Viragosa, he used to be on this council. Now, Busciano said he wants to run. I'm an independent. I always voted Democrat, all my life, my family were Democrats. I changed myself, I'm now an independent. I'm voting for whoever's going to help the people. I don't care who you are, Republican, Independent, I'm voting for you, and right now, I'm voting Republican.
All right, just give her one minute of general public comment.
Yesterday, I happened to be online, and I was happy to hear that the mayor, he had a press briefing on homelessness. Yes, on YouTube. On YouTube, on homelessness, he was... On YouTube, on homelessness, he was in there lying, saying that they've built hundreds of HHH units. That's the biggest lie I've ever heard. They haven't built anything. That's what the controller said. Who's lying? The controller or the mayor? Now, here's another thing. One of the reasons why we have so many African-Americans on Skid Row, we've got 20,000, 54 blocks, and that's just Skid Row, all over the city, is because the housing department is run by Mexicans. Even the director, he's a Mexican, the general manager, Rushmore. Then we got a San Diego, a woman, Marquez. These people are, some of them may even be illegal aliens. They're running the housing department, and they're steering all this housing to the illegals. We need to mix it up. If you go to any of these social service agencies, you walk in the door, you're gonna see Hispanics, Latinos, and Asians. They tell Americans to have nothing, and they give it to the illegal aliens.
Thank you. Cory Smith? Cory Smith, please come forward. Okay, two minutes on all the cards that you pulled, and then we'll give you one minute of general public comment.
All right. Uh, name's Cory Schmidt, for the record. All right, 2 through 5, 25 through 29, lighting districts. I said it once, I said it again, I don't know how many times, I gotta say it. Why are they still on the agenda? I gotta know that we're getting some protections here, because if not, I'm starting to get into the motivation why it's still on the agenda. I'm talking about how dangerous it is, and there's like three or four people that like, I, I'm just, this is my last warning before I really, really delve into it. So, you know, I don't want to see it again. Uh, back to the alcohol thing from earlier, I just, we need to stop competing with New York here. That's something I forgot to talk about. Um, number 33 for the Rose Apartments, uh, I want to make sure that they're fully affordable housing and not just 9%. Um, and the rewards, I mean, I'm just gonna put it out there that, like, I just, I'm gonna say that there's a miscommunication, I guess, 'cause I just, from what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing, you know, I'm gonna, it's gonna be bad. So, um, let's talk about something positive, 'cause there's a lot of negative going on around here. Um, Homeless Connect Day, let's go ahead and do that. Uh, number 37 for extra swimming pool hours, yes. And, uh, come on, guys.
Do you want your, um, one minute or not? No? Okay, he forfeited his one minute of general public comment. Let's bring up, um, Wayne Spindler. Two minutes on, uh, the cards that you pull, and one minute of general public comment.
Thank you, honorable nigger Italian, thank you so much. I come here now to speak as Asian person. Yes, all Asian people control all the money in city. So, we have item for lighting. Yes, lighting go. We support more lighting, especially when you take stupid Jew and put it on property tax for 30 years. That's good. Now, you do not do that to Asian people. Why? 'Cause we get lawyer, Jew lawyer, we sue you, we stop you. Ha, 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 ha. Yes. So, if you want lighting, we know, we go to Norrie. Norrie Martinez gave us free lighting by putting on pole. Every DWP pole, you put light on pole, it's free light. Boy, you, the rest of you stupid Jew asshole, too stupid, you go, you ask the city, "I want the lighting, buddy. I want the lighting." So they give you lighting, then they stick tax up your ass where it belong. Yes, so that's good, and we thank you for the robbery. But do not tax anybody Asian, do not tax anybody white. Only Jew cocksucker you tax. That's all we need. Also, I talked before, and I support all alcohol sale 24 hour a day, and here is current price. Who support that? Because everybody drink, Jew drink, run over, nigger, nigger, run over, Juju, run over, nigger, everybody run over, everybody. Then all of my brothers, sisters from Ja, from China and Japan come here, live here, take over America, stupid asshole.
Okay, one minute.
Yes. Kabuki Theater 2019 is back. So what do we have? We have the sleaziness that's returned. That's right. And we saw Herb Weston take his little bobtail and bobtail his ass out of here when he mentions the special date, March 30th, 2017. Don't worry, Mr. Sedilio, I know what happened, I know, and I know, he looking at me, nobody looking at me. Attempted murder under color of authority has now been established. And you know what the city wants to offer to settle this, to keep quiet? A thousand dollars! A thousand dollars! God, what would I do with a thousand dollars? Well, I could buy four Rams tickets from 2134737008. Marquisi selling Rams tickets.
Okay, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Stop disrupting the meeting. Okay, Eric Previn, come on up. Two minutes, general public comment, then we'll give you your one minute, two minutes on your cards, rather, and then the one minute of general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Busciano, and it's, uh, it's powerful to see you getting right back in the chair after a humiliating defeat alongside David Rue against the rest of the council on that drinking issue. Thank you for, uh, trying to briefly take a stand. Um, sir, when it comes to, um, publicly accessible restrooms, I just think we have to say thank you to CD 2. Today, we have some bridge housing on the agenda, which Councilmember Kukorkian is looking after, uh, feasibility. Incidentally, it was John Wickham who gave the feasibility assessment on the alcohol item, also the man who brought the ACOM Hotel, that I think you and the mayor and everybody are just delighted to be rolling out for the late-night reveling in 2028, once they get that hotel project squared away with a $17 million how-do-you-do from the city. To ACOM, your most trusted partners, the folks who paid for the inauguration of Mayor Garcetti, who are working on LAX for Bonn, and obviously the jail. Yeah, no, I'll get right back on. Thank you, sir.
Last warning.
Studios, what do you mean, last warning? You haven't warned me yet.
You know the routine. You've done it before.
No, there's no routine, sir. I'm speaking, and I'm allowed to speak.
Stick to the cards.
Thank you for your, don't interrupt me, sir, and I appreciate that. Harris and Harris are gonna go around and finally get the money off of these people who can't pay their ambulance bills, and they're gonna get them, and they're gonna get them good, sir. We're not gonna allow them to do anything illegal, but they'll do everything inside the law to squeeze Angelinos. And then, uh, the likes of you guys can jump up and down about how we ought to get more private operators involved in that same kind of activity. Now, regarding adding water in CD 12, I just want to say thank you to whoever is in the chair. I guess John Lee's being certified as we speak. You'll announce at some point when he's taking over for Greg Smith, who's the lobbyist who sat there for nine months, virtually illegally. But nonetheless, it was celebrated last week as a great triumph for, uh, finally, an elected body to say, "Hey, why bother electing people? We can just appoint people, uh, in the interim." Why? Why bother? And it's an interesting question. I think it's called democracy, sir. Now, I just want to say thank you, and I think it's appropriate to Barbara Delvac. She was all set, she's slathered around some of the money today into Mayor Garcetti for the...
Okay, one minute of general public comment.
Goldsmith and Delvac item that was continued, items 7 and 15. For my general public comment, I want to, once again, go back to those toilets. Uh, I feel Councilmember Kukorkian responded in a way. He came up with Mark Schul from Parks and Rec with a, a portable automated idea. Now, the only thing is that mobile pit stops that we've been talking about for months, the whole secret sauce, Mr. O'Farrell, was the idea of an attendant, a human, who can create a kind of sense of decency in an environment where people are going, you know, so there's no bad activity. By doing an automated machine that leaves the toilet seat wet at the end, it, it takes us in the direction of automation, which I know, sir, you, uh, did that massive abnegation when you brought down all the workers and said, "We're gonna fight for you," and then the next week said, "Let them in, and they can do Marisque automation if they want." You know, we don't feel that automation and the workforce fit perfectly in this environment, because the whole point of having an individual there was that individuals bring a sense of community, and these were workforce development. Remember Bonn, and you have one in your district? O'Farrell has one in his. We can't have one, 'cause we get the automated one with the wet seats in North Hollywood. No thanks.
Okay, Dan, you're up. One minute on sp, on item 32, and then one minute of general public...
I already spoke on 32. I'll just do general, I'll save you the time. Councilmembers, last week, a judge up the street at the Moss Courthouse ordered you to pay me $2,000 for your abusing my First Amendment rights, and for fraud, and for perjury by LAPD officers. You're gonna pay me $2,000 for abusing my free speech, and here's my message. Tell Mike Fewer to appeal it. Tell Mike Fewer to appeal this verdict for $2,000. Go ahead. Do that, because what I know about your case now, I'll be awarded $10,000 next time. It's in my column on City Watch, "Judge Orders Perjuring LAPD to Pay City Watch Columnist $2,000," simply because you wanted me on this side of the rope as opposed to this side of the rope. I'm telling you, if you inhibit my rights again, you're gonna get sued on a much more expensive basis. By the way, councilmembers, you're gonna get sued for ADA violations of the press room. Get the press room in ADA compliance, or you're gonna get sued real quick.
Okay, is there a Mike Greenspan?
Mike Greenspan, uh, Bruin butt-kicking Florida Gator. Now, I'm, got a couple items in there. They're bunched in a group of two, because they're kind of related to each other. Items 34 and 38. Now, the rewards. I think the last time one of these rewards got paid, John Walsh was still alive, rest in peace. That's how long ago a reward was paid, and at the time, it was almost as if Paul Corretts was doing the "in-your-face" John Walsh, without saying it, but letting it be known that a reward was paid. Well, that was about several years ago, at least, four or five, conservatively. Now, we're reinstating a reward off a couple of them from 2012. Folks, it hasn't been solved. Now, I've heard that Mr. Smith has a track record of solving cold, cold cases. Maybe you want to give the work to him, and he could solve it for you. But if you see rewards getting paid out, I will say, you guys have some very good LSD, and you're hallucinating. I'm not seeing the rewards getting paid out, but you guys are, and it's not polite. I was always taught it's not polite to eat in front of people unless you have enough to offer. Well, shouldn't you be offering us all that same LSD so we could see the rewards getting paid out that we're not seeing, that only you guys are seeing? Now, about the other two, they're homeless-related issues, and I'm talking about items 32 and 35. Now, it's a very good idea to have that Homeless Connect Day over there in Sherman Oaks. I gotta be a little careful what I say about the homeless, because I, I said something back in March in front of a homeless committee about the homeless people camped out over there at the City Hall in Van Nuys, and by April, when I went to the council meeting, you guys have cleared it out. Um, it's too bad. That area has all these wannabe storefronts, one is just a printing center, and the other four have no tenants. Those could be very good homeless support services for street people to take showers, clean up, get, maybe go freshen up to go for job interviews. Um, as far as the other thing, the bridge housing, it's a good idea if we try to economize and get them. I'm still wanting to bust that pinata. You know what I'm talking about, the Bruin football budget, where there's, what, 20, 30, 40 million wasted? I mean, we could actually do something with it. You know, I'm gonna give you baby killers those few seconds, and we'll go to general public comment.
Okay, give him his one minute, please.
We are two days away and on national television for all to see the UCLA Bruins to lose their first game. Of course, it's at taxpayer expense. Money that could go for homeless support services. Coach Chip Kelly's $3 million could buy a lot of homeless support services. People making $3 million overpaid dollars per year live in nice houses. There are plenty of homeless people in Westwood. 33 years ago, we had that Hands Across America gimmick. How about the homeless forming a ring around the UCLA campus? How many rings would there be? We'd be better off getting Adam Sandler chocolate wasted with our tax dollars. The Bruins are the conference bitches of a cupcake conference. Other teams have their way with them. It is time for Governor Gavin Newsom to blue pencil the football team's budget. Beat the other teams, Bruins can't beat their meat. It's great to be a Florida Gator and kick Bruin butt.
Thank you. Is there Reverend, um, Mello Desrey? Please come up. Thank you. Okay, three minutes on the cards that you pulled, and then one minute of general public comment.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Mello Desire, and I'm a homeless advocate for SPA 6, particularly for, uh, housing developments that we're looking to seek to build in, um, South LA. There is a safety issue that's happening right now, which is why the rise in violence and, and rape amongst domestic violence has increased 62% uh, since the last four years. My concern is this. There are empty lots that have been available that we have inquired with CD 8 for the last year and a half, um, particularly Vermont and Imperial location. Solomon has told me, who is your chief of staff, told me that that's not even his area. It concerns me, 'cause if your chief of staff doesn't know the area of CD 8, then why is he in that office? Number two, who did David Groban give $200,000 to? Was it Mark Reely Thomas? Because there is no knowledge of this high-rise structure that they plan to build there without the community input on who was paid, because the city...
Ma'am, I'm, I'm, hold your time, please.
Yes?
Ma'am, I'm just asking you, um, to speak on the items that you pulled.
34.
Items 2, 3, 4, 34, 38.
Yes. You want me to talk about the teardrop? For two minutes? No? So let me finish, please.
Collectively, you have the three minutes on all the items.
Thank you, only have three minutes.
You can continue.
Try not to interrupt me.
You can continue your time.
I appreciate it.
Just trying to, we're, by the end of the round as well.
Okay, thank you. So, as I'm saying, the issues in South LA are not being addressed, so we would like CD 8 and part of CD 9 to actually be responsible and listen to the numerous reports that were sent, the RFPs that were sent. So 115th and Vermont, as well as Figueroa and 49th, those are the two areas where you have high rate of rape increase, um, because the families there do not have a resource center. So, we are not gonna pay under the table. We are a nonprofit organization that started in Skid Row. We focus on domestic violence, homeless, African-American rights, but for some reason, the reports that we have submitted are not being respected. Okay, so I have one minute. There is a housing-first approach that we have submitted, and we would like for it to be respected. We are applying for contracts with LASSA, and we ask that our local city councilman, Marquise Harris Dawson, to please release the property that's on Vermont and Imperial so we can build a high-rise, we can build a wellness center that we have submitted. We do not have condominium money from Beverly Hills like David Groban did, so whoever he paid the $200,000 for, we want him to release it so we can actually build a wellness center, especially those who have been chronically homeless. There is a lot of monies that's being wasted through LASSA, and we ask that as a nonprofit organization, the Kingdom Warriors Foundation, that we be respected, um, and that the contracts not be red-taped, um, and that we get funded, so release the lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there an M? Someone who pulled a card under M? Okay, see, none. Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's now, I know we have to reconsider, um, item 8. We can also add reconsideration for items 23 and 24. So we'll take the first vote for reconsider, reconsideration, items 8, 23, and 24. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now those items are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it's before us.
Uh, the next vote can be on items 2 through 6.
Okay, members on items 2 through 6, let's open the roll, close the vote, roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And Mr. President, there is a request to send item 6 forthwith.
Without, without... Without—without objection.
The next vote would be on items twenty-five through thirty.
Okay, on items twenty-five to thirty. Members, uh, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved.
And the next vote would be on items thirty-two through thirty-eight.
Okay, on thirty-two to thirty-eight, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
The next vote would be on item forty.
Okay, members, item forty's now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now we have, um, leave closed session items forty-one to forty-three.
Yes, and if I may, Mr. President, on item forty-one, in the case entitled Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $109,904.35 in settlement. For item forty-two, in the case entitled Green Farms Inc. versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $456,397.78, which includes tax refunds, credits, attorney fees, and costs. And finally, for item forty-three, in the case entitled Antonio Rios versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $225,000 in settlement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So with that, members, um, items forty-one to forty-three, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, um, now let's, um, turn to general public comment. Is there a Brianna Gonzalez? Brianna Gonzalez, is that a Marie Hayes?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have one minute? General public comment.
Hi, good morning.
Welcome.
And to all—
Good afternoon.
Excuse me? Hi, good morning, and to all overseas, hi. I'm here to get document D's and financial checks from all companies under General Johnny Lee Austin, United States Army General, who left everything to me in 2006 upon his death. It's pertaining of Claire Elmore from MarieClaire.com and Claire's Boutique. As of today, Claire is dead on—off of my private plane that she had possession of on the time of her death. General Johnny Lee Austin gave me the private plane in 2000 underneath former President Bill Clinton. Um, he released it from the Pentagon to Louisiana, and last year, California, April 4th, I landed in LAX, and I tried to communicate with her as much as I could by not having her real information, 'cause she was hiding from me. I'm embarrassed and humiliated, and I don't have control of my personal resources that I have been given to.
Thank you. Lydia Brown, please come forward. Lydia, Ms. Brown will be followed by Lauren Natoli. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, God bless you. My name is Lydia Monjiri Brown. I'm a VA veteran. I have served both in Army and Marine Corps, and I'm here to represent female veterans. I would like to request that the City of Los Angeles pay more attention to the rights and the privilege that female veterans are not being get—now not receiving. I'm currently at a VA facility. There's 225 male to 11 females, and we do not have the same right when it comes to transition and to the help that we need. There's facility for the male when they leave, the female are left out in the street. Serving this country's been an honor, and I feel that the rights that we should receive as veterans should be equal to all, male and female, not just one gender. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren, followed by Eva Agila.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Lauren Natoli from AIDS Healthcare Foundation. When it comes to California's most prominent problem, the bottom line is the homelessness crisis is the housing crisis. We don't lack space to live in, we lack affordable space to live in. The average LA resident needs to make $47.52 per hour to afford the median monthly rent, an idealized measure entirely devoid of the reality Angelino's working. We must invest in making affordable housing within arm's reach before more people fall out of housing by reaching too far for a dream of safety and security. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there an Eva? Okay, Maurit Palacios, please come forward. Michael Parker. Is there a Adelina Mendez? Daisy Gutierrez? Mello Desrey? If you like, on the one minute of general public comment, Reverend.
Greetings. All right, so I'm just gonna reiterate on the expediting of these projects. There are four lots currently that we are asking for: Western and Sixtieth, Broadway and Manchester, which was supposed to be groundbreaking, I believe, last year, considering a transportation school. Is there any word on that? Is there any word on that? Let me know. And also Manchester—I'm sorry, Broadway and Century. So this is a lot that can at least build a—at least 750 units of permanent supportive housing. Uh, we want to focus most of the measured rates funding going into permanent supportive housing. Um, so we have a End Homelessness Now Act that, working with Maxine Waters and Gavin Newsom's funding for homelessness, as well for new contracts. So HOPICs in Los Angeles Metropolitan of Churches are not the only go-to places to house homeless. We have other—
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a Monique Johnson? Okay, see none. Oh, is that Ms. Johnson coming forward? And then the final speaker would be, uh, will be Antonio Ramirez. Ms. Johnson? Good afternoon. Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Monique Johnson, and I'm here today advocating for people that are homeless and that are, um, domestic violence victims. I would like to start off by first saying that I would like to, um, continue the legacy of Dr. Margery Broder, who advocated for domestic violence, um, more than anyone in South Los Angeles. I was—also wanted to say that we need more resources for not just people of color, but specifically for African-American people in the South Los Angeles area geared towards homeless—homelessness and also housing. The resources that are in place are not helping everyone of abroad. They're only helping Pacific people. These different organizations are not helping the people that are really, really most needed, which are people who are dealing with domestic violence, mental health, as well as, um, I would say, uh, incarceration. I was wondering if you guys can at least hear us. We have a proposal here for that.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Antonio Ramirez, please come forward for your one minute of general public comment.
Item number thirty-one.
Be gentle on the microphone, ma'am. Please be gentle. Thank you.
This is just another criminal monopoly established by the satanic, elite Zionist, Masonic Jewish assholes in trying to legalize alcohol sales at an ungodly time. These shenanigans began long before Bugsy Siegel and Meyer Lansky and the Jewish Italian mob during the prohibition era and the bootlegging liquor and other unsafe criminal contraband. Moreover, this is to morally decay, disrupt, to humanize, and destroy the quality of a good, clean, vibrant, healthy, decent, safe society and wholesome life. Shockingly, there is no public safety, no security, no enforcement of the rule of law. LA is unsafe, uninhabitable, and a fucking stink bomb. LA drunks, who are heavily intoxicated, will combine it with drugs, opiates, sexual orgies, and greater human promiscuity, and challenging the human limits. Look at the high crimes, uh, being committed in LA, such as assault, violence, theft, arson, and crimes against women. So vote the fucking Democrats out and get Republicans in.
Okay, next speaker is—
God bless America.
Okay, you are now disrupting the media, Antonio. Uh, Velvet Advictorian? Velvet, you're—you're going Facebook Live on this. I've been following you.
Yes, I was.
All right.
That's normal for me.
Good—to see you.
Good to see you.
Good afternoon.
To all my, um, former city council members. And I've lived in about three dif—districts in this city, and I'm on the Section Eight program. And basically, Section Eight has cost me a job making $50,000 a year. And their inspections, department needs to be revamped. And I don't know what you guys gotta do to make sure that whoever's inspecting these properties are not getting any kickbacks, or whatever they're getting out of renting people really terrible places to live. And then, I mean, I've had to—to stay at home like thirty times in two years for inspectors, and nothing ever got fixed. And I've had to sue seven landlords, and I've won seven cases against landlords who do not wanna bring their property up to code. So I definitely want you guys to do something about Section Eight Inspection Department. I filed complaints with the City Attorney's Office, and I'm gonna walk right across the street and file a suit against my landlord today.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred. Thank you.
That clears the desk.
Thank you. So, any announcements, colleagues? I have one. I know we are waiting on a submission of a motion, so... They're circulating now, I believe. So, colleagues, uh, this week, uh, we're—we're kicking off LA Fleet Week today with the arrival of a number of ships that came through the LA waterfront and the channel at the Port of Los Angeles. Um, so we're really excited, uh, the next several days leading into the Labor Day. We're gonna have a host of events, activities, live demonstrations, um, a parachute jump. On Friday night, there'll be a concert at the Iowa—the Battleship Iowa. Cheap Trick will be performing, and it's gonna be an eighties theme. And there'll be a Wilmington welcome party, uh, at the Banning Mansion. And, um, we're hopeful that you all join us, and those watching Channel 35, go to lafleetweek.com. How are we doing on that motion? Are we good? Are we in? Um, Mr. O'Farrell, for announcement.
But what the heck? I'll—I'll make the announcement today. Um, this coming Saturday is the Twentieth Annual Defisal Annual Salvadorian Parade in the Thirteenth District. Uh, it, uh, will begin at Van S in Santa Monica, uh, and travel, uh, down to Melrose. Uh, and it's a wonderful opportunity to come and attend a lovely annual parade and observe the rich multiculturalism, uh, that is alive and well in Los Angeles, uh, and also while celebrating the culture of the Salvadorian community, uh, which I so proudly represent. Uh, and, uh, it's just an opportunity to come out and enjoy, uh, some really, uh, great food and, uh, performances. Uh, and I invite everyone to attend. It is a free parade and a—a free city event.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. One more? Any other announcements? Wonderful. Okay. The motion's in. Okay, with that, uh, members, any adjourning motions? We all rise, please, for adjourning motions. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, um, I ask to—that we adjourn today in the honor of a—a legend in music, and more specifically, a legend in jazz, Ms. Cora Bryant. In fact, members, you may recall that we honored Ms. Bryant here in these chambers in 2017, when we honored her for her work and enduring legacy, uh, on Central Avenue. In fact, this past July, we named the main stage the Cora Bryant Stage in her honor. Ms. Bryant learned how to play the trumpet when her brother Fred joined the military, and he left his instrument behind. Cora, unwilling to let it go—to, uh—to let it go, worked hard and turned down scholarships to the Oberlin Conservatory and Bennett College to attend Prairie View College in Houston, where she played with the Prairie View coeds Jazz Band, who performed at the Apollo Theater in New York City. Her father's job moved the family to Los Angeles, where she transferred to UCLA. And it was in Los Angeles where she heard the bebop on Central Avenue. She went on to work with the likes of Dizzy Gillespie, who was her mentor, and played for Josephine Baker, accompanied Billie Holiday. Soon, the bright lights of New York City called her, and she moved away. In 1957, she recorded her only album, Gal with Horn, before returning to the life of a road musician. In 1989, she became the first female jazz musician to tour the Soviet Union. Ms. Bryant was a trailblazer for women in jazz. She led a very full life and passed away at ninety-three on Sunday, August the 25th. She's survived by a host of family, friends, and fans, and will be missed. And may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any others? On my right side. On my left, Mr. Coretsch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Christopher Dinkel, who died in a tragic accident last Saturday morning in Westwood, where he was attending UCLA. Chris was an excellent student with a 3.98 GPA and on track to graduate with a degree in marine biology. He lived a full, adventurous, exciting, diverse, challenging, and loving life in almost 21 years, as—and as you can imagine, his friends and family, both in Pasadena and at UCLA, are devastated. Born in Hollywood, Chris lived his entire life in Pasadena, where he attended Aria Montessori, Mayfield Junior High, and LaSalle High School. As a young boy, he started playing soccer for AYSO, and then on the Mayfield and LaSalle varsity teams, baseball with Pasadena Southwest Little League, lacrosse for the Pasadena Tribe. He was elected social captain for the UCLA sailing team, and also skied with the UCLA ski team. He started acting at Mayfield and continued on the stage for LaSalle, appearing in every theater production all four years of high school. Christopher was survived by his devastated parents, Dr. Catherine Fogarty and Rick Dinkel, his grandparents, Dr. William and Joanne Fogarty, his many aunts, uncles, and cousins, as well as numerous friends. In lieu of flowers, please donate any checks to the Los—to the UCLA Foundation, with Christopher Fogarty-Dinkel in the memo line. The address is UCLA Foundation Care of Alex Nguyen, 10889 Wilshire Boulevard, Suite 1500, LA 90024. A memorial celebration of Jim's life will be hosted on September 29th at Royce Hall at UCLA.
Thank you, Mr. Coretsch. Any others? Okay, seeing none, we are now adjourned. Let's go forth and serve the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.